All right, you guys take it away.
Okay. Well, thank you, Commissioners. We're on utility rate workshop round two. And during the last workshop, Stephanie gave you an overview of each utility fund that we operate. So the Balfour Sewer, Russell Wood Water and Sewer Utilities, Beards Cove, and the North Bay Case Inlet. And this is kind of a continuation of rate work that we took on in earnest last year. And this is a follow-up and in preparation for our budget and building our budget for the 2026 and a bit beyond. So we took a longer view of our capital purchases and equipment replacement and had some goals about trying to set some predictable, stable rates rather than something that was fluctuating with CPI. And that's what Steph shared with you. And so today, we are hoping to come to some consensus on what we would like to do for our rates in 26 and beyond. And happy to answer any questions about what was shared the last call around. That's kind of just a quickie. And then Steph also, there was, I think, one of the funds that we did not have. I think all of them had a variety of scenarios. But Beards Cove, I believe, did not have a 10% increase scenario. So Steph did add that. I mean, she just handed that out so that you could see what that looked like for Beards Cove as well.
The first page is the exact same. The second page was just an addition.
Yeah, so North Bay, if I may, North Bay Case Inlet, the staff recommendation was approximately a 9% rate increase. And then the Balfour Sewer was right around an 11% rate increase. Russell Wood Sewer, about a 10% rate increase. Russell Wood Water and Beards Cove Water had been held with no rate increase for a very long time. So our recommendation was a very substantial rate increase, amounting to 45% for Russell Wood Water. And Beards Cove Water was 80%. Now, those are big numbers when you think about what that is in terms of a monthly rate increase or a weekly, if you will. The Russell Wood Water at 45% increase would be approximately $8 a week addition. And in the Beards Cove Water system, that would equate to about a $9 per week increase.
Out of curiosity, when do we ever look at things that's per week? It's how much per month when you get your bill?
Sure. Sure. But just thinking about, you know, what that means.
Straight up instead of come at things in a way that other people aren't going to be talking about. We can break it down to the day, too. That doesn't make it.
Oh, no, we're not breaking it down to the day. Anything else, Steph, that you'd like to hit on highlight-wise? Richard?
No, not really.
And the only reason the significant increase with Beards Cove Water and the Russell Wood was just to bring it in line with the code, the prior code. So that was why there was such a significant increase recommended for those two.
Yeah, if we would have stayed the course, that's where we would have been today.
So is there a thought about maybe doing like a slow slow increase, doing it incrementally?
For all of them, Commissioner, or for the couple?
For the largest, yeah, for the ones that are getting the most significant increase.
Beards Cove and Russell Wood.
Well, even Russell Wood or Beards Cove, we could, one of the recommendations could be to go back to the original 700 cubic feet. And so then the first tier would be included in that rate.
So adjust the base.
Adjust the base instead of 0 to 400 cubic feet. It would be 0 to the 700 cubic feet.
And then Stephanie, you also looked at, you could incrementally increase, but there's a point where you'll find, you will catch up. So it depends on how slow, right? So it needs to be enough that you will get to where you want to be in a reasonable point of time without losing ground.
The 5% increase will just keep up with inflation and the increased costs with labor and with some of the vendor pricing.
Big difference between 5 and 80%.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. But that was, we had provided also, I think it was the local water pricing. And so it was, the $79.90 was in line with the Balfour Water District, which was paying $80.65 for their base rate.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a lot of information.
We tried to do our homework.
Yeah, and you did.
And hopefully presented something that's understandable and digestible. And so Stephanie, what would be some options for incrementally increasing? So maybe like a three-year or something, two or three-year?
Well, and that's why we had gone back and for Beards Cove.
Oh, yeah, no, sorry.
It's okay. One of the things that we had done was, it needed to be at least 5%, you're just keeping up with inflation. So to catch some of these up would be a minimum of the 10%. And that's, we had gave the 10% option a 20% increase. And then we had worked our way through the five different scenarios. And so it just, we could, it just needed to be at least. On some of them, you have a significant, or enough of a capital reserve. On, you know, some of them didn't need subsidies. So then that was kind of why we had broken them out by, you know, does it answer some of the questions what we're looking at? So, you know, breaking it into smaller scenarios, that's why we gave the multiple options, but.
Would it help if you had an adapter for that?
Yeah.
Or you could email it to me. Well.
It's all good. Beards Cove was the only one that we had given the 10% option as the, that second page. The rest of, none of the rest of them, none of the rest of the sheets had changed. Beards Cove, and I could do it in one of these pretty darn quickly. If I went back to here. And I can manipulate one of them, too.
I think there, they have the, you'll have to. I think we've got the protect on it, I think, is what it was.
Oh, oh, it's not allowing you?
No.
Well, Steph's looking at the other two. Are we somewhat comfortable with North Bay, Balfour, and Russell Wood Sewer?
Are we somewhat comfortable with the North Bay? You said North Bay, Balfour, and the Russell?
Russell Wood Sewer.
Yes, because those are all between 9 and 11% is the proposed or recommended increase for those utilities.
So to give you an answer, I'm way more comfortable with those than 45 and 80.
Right.
And on those ones, like I said, it was to recommend it going back to the code rate. And at the code rate, it at least got us back into some of, for Russell Wood, it provided, did it meet the O and M? Did it meet some of these that under the lower rates, it doesn't long-term without a large subsidy? So for Beards Cove, when we ran the 10%. That brings Beards Cove rate to 48.75. We go down here and we're going to look at where we are for, does it meet the O and M? Does it meet? So it brings in service charges about $102,000 a year. That does not factor in our water rates. And we come down here and does it meet our debt service? There's no debt service. Does it meet the capital reserve? It does not. So that's why, why some of the rates are set the way they are.
Yeah, we have a lot of pipes to be replaced.
Correct.
Most likely.
Yep.
Yes.
Especially Beards Cove, yeah.
So that means, without setting the rate accordingly, that it's more imperative to apply for and receive grants to perform that work.
Right, because they're going to look at that. I know we do it.
Yep. Yeah. And so the key there is making sure we have enough, at least a minimum reserve, to be able to provide the grant match.
Now, on some of the grant matches, you can use labor.
Some in-kind, correct? Yep. Most of this, we would likely be contracting out. And even potentially the engineering. So I don't see us doing that in-house. It's possible, but just given workload and expertise and all those good things, we would likely be putting all of that out to contract.
Okay, makes sense.
And one of the things that we've been working on is looking at, you know, we've been finding the leaks on the customer side and making sure that the water accountability on our side is being kept up. And that's going to be the, finding the leaks.
Exactly. And repairing.
And repairing and, yeah.
For sure, yeah.
Which is simply more justification for a grant.
Yep.
Frankly.
Yep.
Great justification.
Right. And I think that's one of the things that when Richard and I were talking about when we were doing grants and what would it take to upgrade a system like Beards Cove, like how much does a mile of pipe cost and how many miles do you have in Beards Cove?
Right.
He had about five miles and he was saying it was just over a million dollars, just estimating. So if we had a 20% match, you'd have over a million dollars just in matching. And we don't have that kind of in-kind expenses for Beards Cove.
Yeah, which is why we'd have to approach it systematically.
Yep.
Basically replace section after section. Might not be the most cost-effective in terms of moving and all of those good things and letting one nice contract, but without having an adequate match amount, that's where we are, or where we would be.
It's the approach we can afford, hopefully.
Questions coming in. You're awful quiet. You got me a little nervous.
I'm waiting to see what you guys are thinking, because I know where I'm at and I haven't gotten on this. And I know the past things that we've done and.
I definitely want to make sure that people can afford this. Because it doesn't do any good to raise the rates and not be able to afford to pay.
Right, right, absolutely.
They look like they're in pretty good shape if you're looking at the minimal hardship index.
Yeah. That was one of the things that we took into consideration of all the rates to make sure that we had capacity in those.
It's not just that. There's a shock value that's going to be.
Correct.
There's a bow wave that hits.
Yeah. For Russell Wood, the first tier is, what, $10 per step? And so that was raising the minimum threshold from 400 to 700 would account for that.
Okay, gotcha. And the others are all at 400, right?
Well, it would only be Beards Cove.
The wood to the seven.
But Beards Cove and Russell Wood, if you raised them both to. Just for water. Just for water.
Just the water.
Just the waters.
Okay.
So it's the consumption we have.
Yep.
Their base rate is based on 400 cubic feet. So raising the base rate from 400 to 700 could account for at least the Russell Wood shock.
And right now, the debt for Russell Wood Water
The debt?
Is 1 million.
The debt is for the Russell Wood Sewer?
It's for the sewer, not the water. So I wrote that down wrong this time.
I think the $62,000 a year is on the Russell Wood Sewer. For the pipe lining and.
Oh, yeah, it's right here.
It's the sewer.
So it's the sewer, okay.
Yep.
And that's 1 million is what's owed against it, right?
I'm not positive of the balance at this time, but I know that they should have brought that. I know, I just pulled all of that up.
Well, I thought we had talked about it.
It's a long, it's a long time before that is paid off. Pat, as far as the, you're right, the shock, whatever we walk away with today, the next step would be for us to go out and have conversations with our communities and talk about, this is what we're contemplating. And then hear, hear from our customers about how that may or may not impact them and what concerns they would have.
And factoring in waterproof vests. Use the same ones from last year.
Yeah, same from last year.
It's right around 1 million.
Recycle.
I brought it, I brought up the schedule.
Oh.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's here. I just had to find the Russell Wood. And that's the largest challenge with Russell Wood is that they're, the subsidy, the subsidy.
Subsidies, the grants.
And trying to meet O and M just with their rates, which they're currently not.
And they're not meeting at all, right?
Correct, they are not.
And they're kind of maxed out on the number of users.
Correct. So there's no growth.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we got six more connections available in Russell Wood, maybe 20.
And so Richard and his team are constantly looking for ways to reduce expenditures. And we're always looking at ways of reducing. So on Russell Wood, there's really, there's not a lot of options. There's, a pump costs $30,000.
A new well pump's like $45,000, yeah.
How many extra pumps do we have or are they different than the ones that we have?
Oh, yeah, they're different, yeah. Yeah, we don't have any extra well pumps. We just, we have three wells and one of them we really try not to use because that's the one that's high in iron and manganese. It's right at the threshold. It's the one that causes problems with the dirty water, you know, like the brown water. So we try not to use that. I'd say well two is probably not adequate for summertime flows or the newer well three is. So, yeah, it just depends. Or well three, the most productive one would be about 45,000. Not much less for, I mean, it's just the price of a few different horsepowers is all. It's still the same work and roll out and everything.
Right.
I wouldn't expect it to be a lot cheaper for any of them.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with your recommendations for the North Bay, Balfour. Russell Wood.
The sewer.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
And we knew that the water was going to be the biggest challenge. And, you know, we've had almost a full, we've had a full year of good data coming from the water tier billing. And about 60% of all customers, 60 to 80% are all within tier one, base rate and tier one. So the ones that are in the outliers, the tier three for Russell Wood or tier four for Beards, Russell Wood, tier three for Beards Cove are the ones that are reaching out and they have excessive high water use. And those will be the leak credits. For most of that tier is going to be what we're working on, you know, they're one-time occurrences. They're not doing it every month.
Right, yeah. So, okay, so just to recap, so North Bay, you've got a North Bay, you're seeing an increase.
I don't think that's me.
It's definitely. It's very similar. Coming from over that direction.
I know.
Utility rates will be.
All right, so let's go back here. North Bay, we're looking at a, are you saying in 8.6?
Yes.
So we start off, that's what we're recommending. The 8.6, yeah. Okay.
Yep, recommendation is an increase from the 2024 rate. So, or the, yeah. So it was decreased to 120 in 2025. So we're recommending that it increases 4.4% over, on, back to the 20, above the 24 rate.
Okay.
So that would be.
So that would be 124, 124.86, right? 130, 35.
130, 35.
Oh, sorry, I was looking at the wrong, wrong round.
So that would be about $10.35 a month increase.
Okay, and then Balfour Sewer and increase of
10.6%. And that would be from 110.54 to 122.25.
Russell Wood, an increase of 10%?
Yep, yes.
Except for 129.97.
From 110.15. And then? Yeah.
I think the water's the only one that I have a hard one with.
So Stephanie, maybe you could explain a little bit further. So if we change the base of 400 cubic feet to 700, how would that play out on the rates? Because I'm not so sure that's fully
No, I'm not.
Understandable.
Right.
I'm not getting it.
Well, I'll tell you.
Why would that be a benefit?
Right.
They get about 75% more water in that base rate than they do otherwise.
Right.
Yep.
It's that, from a customer perspective, it's absolutely.
They almost double the amount of water that they get with their base rate without fear of adding the consumption.
Right.
Additional consumption.
Sorry, I'm trying to.
So that begs the question, what is the average consumption? Are they normally using 400 and bumping it up to 700 is meaningless?
So I have, 60% of customers are using just base. When I factor in base plus tier one, I'm at 80 to 85%.
Right.
So most customers are within base and tier one. So we would have all of our customers now being, 85% of them being billed for tier one and tier two, which would be the new base of 700.
The new base of 700.
If, yep, the new base, which is, you know, when we're looking at trying to get the rates where everybody is participating, paying the O and M, that we'd get 85% of customers
So where that would potentially be detrimental is if you were a single family or a couple that has super low water use and you say, I'm never going to use that 700. I'm happy with 400 and now my rate's gone up a little bit. So what if I have more water, right?
That's my point.
Yes.
I cannot open it because I've got one open that I can't read, which one? I apologize. Well, you're on a computer that.
It's all good.
It's not familiar.
I've got all the ones that were open before. I'm going to go ahead and close them all so I can just open my copies.
Oh, good idea.
Because they don't let me because it's saying they're already open.
I think the other reason we talked about the base rate at 400, Commissioner, correct me if I'm wrong, it was similar to other utility base rates, is that right? PUD 1, I believe, had a 400 as their base. I don't think Balfour Water does.
No, I think there's, there's right on consumption, too.
Yeah.
There's a a base plus rate.
Right.
Yeah.
So currently, we're budgeting for Russell Wood, $20,000 a year in tier revenue. So if we increased the base rate, we would be, yeah, three quarters of that. So we would drop it probably to 15,000. So we would lose $5,000 in tiers. But we've been doing, we've been budgeting very conservative on the tiers because we've been chasing leaks and making sure that as, as people are getting their bills, they are, they are definitely conserving.
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, or they've become more aware.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah. And as we come into the summer months, yeah, we've had a lot of phone calls from customers, you know, all right. Alright, where was I last year? How's it gonna affect me this year? And they had gotten, the ones that had large, um, significant water usage in the summer, were receiving letters last year saying if you maintain this, this rate of water, this would be what your bill would be, you know, in the, when we go live.
Right, right. Is there any thought down the road to maybe, the P U Ds will have an average, so here's your yearly average? And then they divide that into twelve. Is there a way that we could possibly do that in the future? Or would that make sense?
Just like you do on your P U D bill, it's like you pay this budgeted amount every, I, I
I think probably having a, a, a good
Better.
Uh, yeah, better, better trend lines, cause we've only been live for about six months. I know that we're looking, one of the things that we were looking at is up, updating our software to have more capacity, capability to do those, and for customers to see that usage on their bill, cause current, our current invoicing doesn't allow for a graph that shows, you know, what your, what was your usage last year?
Awesome to see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause a lot of, a lot of water billings.
History and, I don't know. Oh my goodness, the grandkids are here.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
More balance for those grubby little critters. Swimming in the saltwater. Alright, so what's the next step? Where do you want us to go? How, do you want us to give your recommendations, which you will then take out to the homeowners or to the?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we're hoping for, is some direction from you commissioners about, here's, here's relatively where we're comfortable in terms of rate increases. We'll go hit the streets, talk with our, our customers, and then, um, bring that back. The, the final action will be part of the whole budget process. So, um, we'll report back, or of course you're welcome to attend any of those community meetings and hear firsthand. And we'll, um, report back and you can refine according to what we're hearing and then adopt a new rate and bake that into our, our budget. And it will be adopted as part of the budget process.
Now, to head up, some of these I will not vote for, so.
Well, now, are we voting for them or just giving you recommendations?
Recommendations.
But then eventually the, the
Upon the red.
Yeah, if you take out to the public.
Oh, and then this will be, this will be set for a hearing?
Correct, yes.
So we'll definitely wanna schedule additional time for that hearing.
Similar to last year.
Well, before you set the recommendations, I'd like to just touch on a few things with you, to share with you. I understand the comment about this is where we would be if, you can make a comment like that, no matter what it is, the color blue or whatever. That's not a reality unless we choose for it to be a reality. We chose not to increase ten percent one time because it was so excessive. We stopped it. There were other decisions that have been made all the way through. When we make those decisions, we don't go to and say, but we're gonna come back and get you for the rest of it in a few years. That's not what we do. So I think it's not the, the ripe argument to have when we're even having these discussions. I definitely don't wanna take that to the public and say, hey, I didn't beat you as much as I could've. That's not what I, but I intended to beat you later. That's, that's not what I, I wanna do. Taking, you know, a lot of these things are set up in a certain manner where we know we're gonna get money to fund certain things, but not all of them are even equal. Uh, we have a situation where, North Bay, for example, we lowered it because they had the highest, um, amount of reserves and everything else. They were a good, solid system. Theirs continued to go up, so each one was taken individually with that. The idea of going back to starting to look at redoing what we just did, which was going to the four hundred and then going back out to the public and say, we think we're changing our mind, but just for you, and we're gonna do this, they're gonna confuse them even more. But I had the same issue when we were doing it. I was one of the ones that wanted to increase a little bit, uh, uh, when, when we weren't. But, cause it was necessary, but some of this isn't necessary. I appreciate that it'd be nice to have it all, but it just isn't, uh, anything that's a ten percent increase is, is something that we should really consider very heavily. One of the reasons why, I'll give you a great example, you have the phone calls of people that are calling you and they're saying, uh, what was I last year, what was? The reason why is because regardless of whatever this number says they can afford, they can't. That's why they're calling you to find out what they can really afford. So I myself, I think it, we could go this route and take as much as we can for the moment, as much as we get from, but I just don't think that's the way to go on this. I think we need to be a lot more careful. Uh, we do know that there's an issue in Bell Fair, but Bell Fair Water is actually a profitable system for us. We're acting like it's not what the numbers we're talking about, but now, will it be? No, because we have to replace pipes. But that's something we have to go out, uh, to our legislators to get the money to do that. That's what we've done in the past for everything else. And I don't think we can rate ourselves out of that trouble because the pipes are so, you know, you really, we can't rate ourselves out of that.
Right, yeah.
So, that's what I see when I'm seeing these, and I definitely don't wanna create hardships on these people, uh, when, when, you know, we don't have to I've said this before, the role of government is to do what people cannot do for themselves. Some of these things are what they couldn't do for themselves, that's why we ended up with it. I just wanna be more than careful with it. I do understand there are top places where we have to make up, uh, but for me, the idea of I can understand the four point four percent increase for North Bay, but the four point four percent over the top of what we actually gave them back? Now we wanna take it back and give them a four percent, point four percent increase. That's where I have a problem with these.
It was the thought process, um, of why that rate was chosen when I look at a ten year. When I look, project out ten years, when there's a capital need.
There's absolutely nothing wrong with your arguments, nothing. And that isn't what I'm saying, for sure. Uh, but you always pick an argument and that's what you follow the path. I pick a different argument on how to go with. Doesn't mean that you're wrong and I'm right, but also doesn't mean that I'm not right also. Uh, it, this is just where I focus my opinions based on the history that I have with the systems, that all those years, just knowing there are times when we're given. And there's times where we've had to take a little bit back, but I don't wanna start trying to take everything that we, we can. It's just not where I am. And that's why I would, some of these I'd have to vote against if it went up that way. I'm not trying to be rude about it or mean, I just I think we started the argument in the wrong place, for me.
Well, I know the Bell Fair sewer is doing so much better because it was in the red, and now it's not. It's all dead. So I feel, I feel a lot more secure with the Bell Fair sewer than probably any of the others, so far.
So far.
So far. And I know we, we can't, nor should we ever depend on the legislature to help us out with stuff. It's becoming more and more evident that they're not. Ours have been, our, our legislators have been amazing and they, they've been helping us out for years, but I don't wanna have to depend on that either. So, I'd like to find a way that we can get to a happy spot without hurting people, as well, because our primary duty is, is to provide services for our constituents or for, for Mason County.
Yeah, and obviously that's
How do we do that? Oh, that's okay. How do we do that without strapping people? I mean, I understand. We all live on, on very tight budgets, I'm sure.
Yeah, more so.
Yeah.
For sure.
Well, it's gonna get even harder now that this state passed the nine point two million dollar tax increase.
How much did we increase Russell Wood last year?
Excuse me?
How much did we increase Russell Wood last year?
Uh, Russell Wood went from forty-four thirty-two to fifty-five.
So, you can see what I'm talking about, that's, so we did that.
Was that water or sewer?
That was water.
Yeah.
We did that to them already, so it just wouldn't be, I understand that it's behind, but at the same time, that was a pretty huge increase.
And we have been watching, um, our collectability, yeah.
And on top of that, we also tiered it, so we actually did a little better than that percentage-wise on some of them, on top of so. And that was a hardship for some of those, I know it was. But Lynch Cove or Beards Cove, I mean, they're very low income. And having a huge impact on them can really have an effect on them.
Yeah, I think I'm more concerned about Beards Cove, honestly.
But Beards Cove is actually profitable. Just so you know, that's one of the, except for the piping.
I was gonna say.
The cap or expenditure.
Except for we are never going to be able to, not, it's not our fault, it's not our staff's fault. We were given a piece of poop that was blown apart, fallen apart, went completely broke, had everything like that, and they have they have returned it to a completely functional, profitable, well-operated system that every once in a while when somebody shuts off a sink, it blows the whole line. But it's not our fault, that's what was given. As we need to focus on going out to get monies to do that, as we did for, for the, uh, meters and stuff like that. I think that would be one of our top focuses.
I'm sorry.
On Bell Fair, it's just some of the things that I see. For example, uh, I'd like to find a way to start getting this closer together with some of them because eventually there may be a day where we start to unify and stuff. Uh, Bell Fair or, uh, North Bay, the idea of, of giving them the C P I, the four point four C P I does not bother me. They're not a system that's in trouble anyway or anything else. Uh, it's just, it's just an extra argument of, well, if we get it back to where it was before we did the, the decrease. Instead, we just go with the C P I. I can, I can stomach that. The Bell Fair one, I actually think we do need to increase it. Uh, and again, even though that's an area I've had the, most battles with, I do know that we held them for ten years before we started letting them go to do the increase. The only problem that I have for fear on this one, I, so I'd like to see that would go up to the, the break-even point for the O and M. Just that safety for the system and everything else, so that's, yeah.
That'd go to the one-twenty-two.
Yes, and the reason, we would do that, that would put also the North Bay and the other one a lot closer together for what their rates are, where they have been separate for many, many years. Uh, with that though, I also believe we're gonna have another thing that comes up that, you sent me the list of some of those, some of those were pretty surprising.
Correct.
And one of them, uh, the Q S C, I didn't realize they had gone up to forty-six. I remember it at thirty-one. So they went up to forty-six. Now they'll come back down where, I don't know what made the difference, but glad that we see it, but some of the others will go up safely. But a few of them I don't know, but a, a few of them, they weren't nothing in the first place, so we gave them one, but
Yeah.
There's some changes, there's gonna be some
There were two of them that were significant increases, but they've been, been incorrectly calculated E R Us for a very long time.
Well, I'd like to find, and this is just asking, I'm, nobody or nothing on this, and I don't even know if we can do it, but I'd love to look at where we're sitting to get to this break-even O and M with increasing the, the residential to this exact rate that you have here.
Okay.
With, uh, offsetting the gallons and starting to separate the businesses. And offsetting the gallons to come up with the same rate, so we can maybe give a little more gallons, so it won't be as many E R Us. But then, if we can eventually separate them, then we'll be able to grow our, our commercial base by keeping that rate lower and it won't have the effect, but the residential rate, if they're paying it in, in, in Allen, they should probably be paying it in there, they should probably be paying it. That's, I don't know if you can even do that, but that's what I'm hoping to see, and have, like to have that conversation within the year. If we establish this early, but then the next year that we find a way to separate out those two, we've done a lot of that work already.
Oh yeah.
And as for, uh, North Bay has always been our problem, or not North Bay, uh, Russell Wood has always been our problem child, it's just the way it is. But we just did a huge increase on them. Uh, if we were to do an increase, we need to just be mindful of the huge increase we just gave and get one accordingly. Uh, and again, the Beards Cove one, we just did a large increase on them as well.
Their increase, they stayed at forty-four thirty-two.
Did we keep them at forty-four?
Yeah, they stayed at forty-four thirty-two, and they had a, um, their tier rate was almost ten percent of that of what Russell Wood tier rate was.
Then I would, with that information, I would support a ten percent increase. Even though we've stopped at nine before, we changed everything in order to do it, there is a time we need to do it. But that's not to get us out of trouble for the pipes. That is just to make sure we maintain a good reserve bases we're going, because the one thing about that system, we already know, we have a lot of emergency things that are gonna continue to happen. Even when we go after the grants, there'll still be another pipe that blows, and then when you turn the water on, it'll blow another pipe somewhere else. So, with that
We have a well pump to replace as well.
We do. Yeah, we have a, well, four.
This is outside of this, but I've said it before, I don't know how to go about it, but we need, we really need to look at establishing and changing the ability to grow in a community that's right next to Russell Wood and look at investing into another another pump, so that we can actually have a community that is allowed to grow right next to Russell Wood, because the only way we're gonna get out of this trouble with Russell Wood is more connections. And we've never done the, the work that it takes, but there's, the land is identical next to it. If we were allowed to create even a standalone community, cause those do exist, where they're able to do smaller parcels, you create a Russell Wood right next to it and eventually let us grow out of it by doubling our capacity. Or maybe just even if we take them a third, that would go a long ways to
To feature the property right there.
And you have the, the whole thing, and then it's all just little tiny pieces here of empty land.
Talking to waters.
Yeah.
Are you talking water or sewer?
Water. Well, no, actually, it would be
I did, I did both.
It would be
That's why I was worried, the capacity of the sewer.
Yeah, I don't know the capacity of the sewer.
It's being evaluated right now.
Yeah, and maybe we work to do it, cause if we could do that, that would give you the tools that are necessary to have a standalone community that we created. I think you were here when we did it, we allowed for some green space, they could have larger parcels and have things right here on the, together, so they could put it for, uh, uh, homes and stuff in communities and then have more green space behind them.
I think the only, the only thing we'd have to worry really about is, is water rights.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're, we're, that, we'd have to acquire more water rights, for sure, but, I mean, like you said, we haven't done the homework to find out.
And I wanna remind you, uh, Bell Fair Water, what's funny, because they, they've lost all the work they did. Uh, they don't even know this, somehow it's all lost. But when I was a Port Allen Commissioner, they were in front of us for water rights. And they did something that was pretty impressive. They went from three hundred and fifty gallons to a hundred and seventy-five gallons per E R U. By changing their E R U rate, they were allowed so many more hookups. But that's when they had the war and the guy was chased out of town and all that other stuff, well, all that stuff disappeared. They don't remember it, they don't have anything on it. I was there at the Port Allen, so we were watching it when it happened. It was like, wow, that was impressive. Then we got a raw, water rights right then, right after that, cause the way it works is you have to get rid of the ones that are in front of you. You, if you have to pay to help them to get past it, that's the only way you get those water rights. So, if we could change capacity, and you already know how many gallons are used now, cause now we have actual meters, which we didn't have back in the day, so.
For sure.
Just something to think about. Sorry. I would like to vote, my thing is, you know, I'd like to vote for it. I always try to, but I just know that I can't with some of these. At that, at that rate.
What would be the easiest way to present to the communities? Would it be to have a flat rate for everybody, or would it be?
That's what we had, we just got rid of that.
No, I mean, no, I, I didn't mean a flat rate. I meant a flat percentage rate. So a flat, everybody gets a ten percent increase, or?
We present to the individual communities. Yeah, I kind of have mixed feelings on that. Um, I think that what it takes away from is the fact that each utility has its own unique needs. It has a certain amount of customers, it has a certain capital need, um, operating costs are somewhat consistent. But if you just have a flat percent increase, it makes folks think we're all the same. And, um, we're not, we're not running our utilities that way, nor should we, to be, um, meeting our accountabilities, so.
And so when you speak to the, to each community, you express that, right?
Yes, yes. We met specifically with Russell Wood last year and relayed a lot of stuff that they were unaware of with their, with their, um, utility.
Now, I wanna give us credit on that, cause we did some great work. First of all, we did increase their, their rate a lot, but at the same time, they got a great education to, to show exactly where they were and how bad it could have been. And we were very cautious with how we increased it with that year. Also, because we went out there, we cleaned that system.
Yeah.
And the complaints that they had are mostly all gone. They had huge complaints out there with dirt as water you can imagine, yeah. It was terrible. But, uh, and water pressure. Our staff has gone and cleaned those tanks, did all these things. One of their arguments, that's one of the reasons why I could see a One of their arguments, that's one of the reasons why I could see a ten percent increase, and even though I don't like it, I'm just telling you I could see it. Because we did more than ten percent increase the first time, but they were really upset saying, how dare you increase this when it doesn't even work? When we can't, well, now we can. Now the water's clean, now the pressure is pretty stable. I could see another increase there, because that's the farthest one from being doable. But that's just taking what we probably can, not always could, but what we probably get away with in that community. I don't know, you have to go back out to all of them, if the increases are mellow enough, then it would be no different than any other year where you just did an increase. And you just put it in the justification. Russell Wood, if you do a ten percent, you're gonna have to go back out there. Belfer, we did Belfer, I don't know that we'd have to go back out again. There were some people, but it was mostly people from Allen that showed up for the Belfer one.
That's true.
So, because Belfer is very low on population, high on business. Allen was the opposite, they have very little business and a small population.
Still that way.
So yeah, and it's going to be, because of some choices we made as commissioners. Pizzas have arrived. I ordered pizzas, make sure.
I'm fighting in my head with myself.
Well, remember, we don't have to make any decisions today, we can come back and do this again.
Yeah, but the sooner you guys get out there, the sooner that you can implement or start working on the budget, right?
Absolutely, yeah, yes.
We've got everything else plugged in.
Yeah. I don't know, I kind of feel like it's just a, a ten percent.
And I, I just, I wanted one more follow-up, and we were talking about Russell Wood and the customers reaching out. It wasn't about the base rate that a lot of the customers are challenged with, it's the, the tier, tier rate.
The four hundred or seven hundred?
On the tier rating, so for Beards Cove, it starts out, I think it's a dollar twenty-five per hundred cubic feet. In Russell Wood, it starts at ten.
Ten bucks or something.
So, that's why I was saying, so the first, so if they're paying fifty-five dollars.
There's big increases there.
So when they go from fifty, from fifty, fifty-five dollars is their base, and they use the first tier as to seven hundred, they're already paying eighty-five dollars. So, for them, it's not getting past that first tier, it's the tiers after that, because it goes from twelve fifty to, I think, fifteen dollars. To twenty dollars a tier.
Or do you think that increasing, increasing it to seven, to seven hundred and increasing that base, sixty to seven, would save them, would help them, yeah.
Would help them, yeah, like, wait, eighty plus percent of the customers would be covered under the base then.
Under the base and the increased rate. Because if they're already using.
But it's like a balloon, you take from one, you're gonna lose from another, and you're gonna have to increase it overall. There's just no, there, there's no, there's no way around that.
Right?
Yeah.
But then you have more, an increased number of the community members instead of the, what was it? The, the first tier, it's everybody, we were, we, we needed that, that higher tier to make up some of the, the operating costs. If we had a hundred and fifty customers, you know.
In the base.
In the base, it would, it would help increase it, but they would also increase their, their, the cubic feet that they would be allowed. So instead of leaving it at the four hundred, you're saying, you know, we see, we see that sixty to eighty percent of you are already using that seven hundred gallons and already paying the eighty-five dollars. We'll just include that in the base.
Right.
And then we'll just, anything over the seven hundred, and then, and then modifying the base, or the tiered rates.
I, yeah, just from a customer's point of view, really, it's four hundred cubic feet is, is based, it's a ninety-eight gallons per day, per household. So two people, it's forty-nine gallons a day per person. Where the seven hundred is more along lines of all other kind of averages we look at, it's, it's a hundred and seventy-two gallons a day. Which is, it's a lot better, the US average is eighty-two gallons per day per person.
And that's the US average?
It's, that's the, that's, that's the average water consumption per person across the United States. Is about eighty gallons a day. So their base rate covers about forty-nine gallons a day per person. But if you move it to seven hundred, it'd be way more in line with the US average. My customer hat on, on that one.
Yeah, it depends on the customer too.
Sure, you might have a, oh man, do we see the differences.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, because the customer who doesn't use four hundred cubic feet is gonna say.
Sorry, I thought I had dismissed it. Did you get your alarm? Well, obviously I've not done enough homework on this, and shame on me. So if I were to do more homework in a week. Is there additional information that would make it easier for you?
Like you said, I've, I've got my recommendations that I put out there, and that's based on the information I already had. Comfortable with those, whether anybody else would be comfortable with them, I don't know, but.
So to make sure I understand, on North Bay.
Four point four.
Four, so the CPI, okay. And then break even.
On Belfer Sewer, but maybe that's something we would talk about, maybe we should do that in two bites, two years. Meet partway to get closer to each other, and meet partway, but within two years, we want to be breaking even on the O and M.
Are you saying, you're saying that you want North Bay and Belfer to be very similar?
I'd like for that eventually, because they do talk, they're all part of the same community, and, and they're both, this one will start, it's already paying for itself. This one will be right at the same time, about the same amount. But I could.
If you did the four point four, that would be a hundred and twenty-four point eight six, right? No, 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 that's eight point six, sorry, it'd be one thirty, thirty-five.
No, four point four would be a four, about five dollars, so about one twenty-five, I'm just roughly, what's four point four of that?
Oh, that's gonna be what, an extra, is it gonna be one twenty-six?
I think it'd be six dollars.
Well, we've got three and a half percent increase, and that's at a hundred and fourteen. In Belfer Sewer?
No, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, boy, I lost, I'm completely wrong, I just didn't know.
One twenty-four eighty-six.
Is that, is that four point four percent?
It's four, four percent.
That's four percent.
I got one twenty-five twenty-eight, I have four point four.
Yeah, so five bucks, if that works, I'm comfortable in there. And then, if either do the same thing, actually, just bring it up to the ten percent, don't mess with the first one in Belfer. So just go up to the ten percent, that would bring them up to one twenty-two twenty-five, get them closer. Russell Wood, if you did the, the ten percent increase, I'd be comfortable, even though, and if you wanted to change it at the time to seven hundred, that'd be an easy sell to them, to say, we're doing that, but we're raising your base rate. But how much will you actually make then, so keep that in mind. Beards Cove.
So Russell Wood. So are you saying ten percent for both, Randy?
For both water and sewer and Russell?
I was thinking water, but let's see, sewer would be.
Get the sewer, the ten percent would be one.
That puts them up a little higher, but then the ones under the most under the water. So I guess.
And that one has the most need for improvement, right? Or is that Beards Cove?
Beards Cove, that's the biggest expenses coming.
This is one way that we run the most backwards every year.
Yes.
So literally is backwards every year, that's why I go for a full ten percent. But that's after doing a ten percent or so last year on that, and doing the water, you know, twelve percent, and doing.
Yep.
But I could, I could, I could do it, but if you increase the seven hundred gallons, I think that would help it go down a lot easier.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Absolutely.
But make sure we don't go backwards.
Well, that's what I'm looking at with the seven hundred gallons for Russell Wood. At six fifty, if we increase their water usage to seven hundred cubic feet, and we only, right now, if, if they're at seven hundred cubic feet, they would be paying eighty-five dollars a month. So that would be, it would be a cut, so I'd have to run some numbers.
So Russell would be, would be eighty-five?
No, I, well, yeah, it would be if they were, if they, if they use seven hundred cubic feet in Russell Wood.
Okay.
So if we increased the seven hundred cubic feet in Russell Wood, and was included in their base rate at sixty, seventy-five, we'd actually be losing money.
That's what I was asking, because then, I noticed that from what you're talking about, I can see it, but how much? Or, you know, so how, but, so it may not be a full ten percent increase, but will it be, and will that ten, ten percent increase also go to the, to the, the next?
The tier?
The tier.
Yeah.
Should, should increase also by the same ten percent, I would assume. So that might make up some of that.
I'll run, I'll run some.
And then, the Beards Cove one, even though they're profitable and everything else, I hate to say the ten percent, but I'd rather see the four point four percent. But if it had to be ten, I would not vote against it, is what I'm saying. But just because, again, that is because of the things that break now, not the idea of replacing. We're not gonna price ourselves into replacing that stuff.
Correct.
And I would vote for, for those.
Can you look at what, how it worked out if you had three tiers? Instead of going from four hundred to seven hundred, you went four hundred, five hundred, six, seven.
So currently, we go.
So what, what would your, you know, have to be at seven hundred? Give them some options, because I know there's gonna be people who don't use the seven hundred. And they're not gonna wanna pay, you know, whatever that top rate is, if they don't use that much water.
Well, I think, I think you were talking about though, bringing the, the base rate up to them, so those that are in between, get it for the same prices they would at the four hundred. That's what I think you were saying.
Correct, but we're gonna jack up the, the base rate, is my understanding is. We want to raise the base rate so that we're distributing it over a greater number of people. Eighty-five percent, I think it was, you said.
So it's the, the one or two people households, or, or bigger, that are very, very conservative, that would say, wait a minute, I liked that other.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
So one of the things that I, we've been mapping out and measuring all of the consumption, I can do a chart where it'll show you how many, at, at what? At a hundred, two hundred, the number of customers that are at each one, I can do a bell curve.
One of the benefits of keeping that for, although, I'm not saying that, because I actually like the idea of, if you're gonna raise the rate, saying, I get you more gallons, that, that might make the bill easier. But one of the benefits of keeping the same rate is they are using less water, because if you have to go back to the state to try and get extra ERUs out of what you have, it should be nice to already have them keeping that rate low. It would make it easier for you to achieve that.
Well, that's true, I could demonstrate that our existing water rights were for this many people with this many gallons assumed, that this is what we're actually doing.
But if you give them seven hundred, they will use more.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Oh yeah.
For sure.
Maybe not a swimming pool, but they'll use more.
Yes.
We ever figure out the other one that was a thousand dollars, the swimming pool, they have.
We found them all, we found them all. When they started getting built, they fixed them.
Yeah.
It's a great incentive.
That's wrong, yeah.
Well, I kind of like where your head's going on that one. Because it does kind of make sense, the only one that I, that I worry about is Beards Cove.
I don't disagree with you, the only thing is, I just know for a fact, we can't, we can't buy our way out of that one. It's way, it's way bigger.
I think that's, that's why I'm worried about it.
Yeah.
Because we can't.
And you should be, I get all the foot calls on that, I can tell you, they actually fix the water, and when they turn it on, it blows somewhere else sometimes. I say it like it's a joke, but it's not, it happens.
It happens.
Because the pipe is so old and brittle that's.
Which one has the asbestos?
That's. Yeah.
Yeah.
We need to focus on getting funds for that, and has, have that as one of our top priorities, in my opinion, for our legislators to go out. They're really good about helping us when they know that there's a real serious issue like that, that's what they've really come forward on. They would rather do it for, for, to keep the, the prices down, but in a sense, this does.
So you have an estimate of how much it would cost to replace, right?
I just said, an engineer's estimate of cost per mile, a little over a million dollars per mile. I think we got about five and a half miles.
Yeah, so, let's, let's, let's have a little meeting with our legislators. And let, let them know the issue that we do have there. Because if we're, if they see, if Beard Cove sees that we are working on it, taking an interest in it. Like you said, when you fix the waters.
They're gonna see, Mike, and Mike Collins and his team has been, have been working on our design and bid specs to replace. We're starting right in the middle of Larson, Larson Lake. And replacing all the AC pipe in that, in that, I think it's Larson Lake Road that goes all the way back out to North Bay Road. Mike, Mike's gonna, and that dip. So, we, we've got grant money to, to make that, those repairs and replace that pipe in that intersection and on that roadway. So Mike's gonna actually double shot the, the whole road when he's done too. So it saved us some money on site, on road restoration, and helps them with that dip, and, and gets us all that AC pipe right out of the middle of that whole development, so.
So perhaps when we do this, we consider utilizing the, our representatives and our senator to open the doors also with the Coliseum. Even though you think they don't have that, Tim Sheldon was able to get me in the doors, and I was able to do some stuff with our sewer when we first came in. Because he got me in the doors, the truth of the matter is, that didn't actually work, what happened is, there was a lady I thought was the secretary, who was just so nice to me, and every, where once she kept opening doors for me, it turned out, she was the head of the whole damn thing, she just was sitting in the back, and she was just so helpful, but she got us through a lot. But having those things open, we need to have the conversation about spray field for Belfer. We need to have that conversation with expansion of that system for Russell Wood, to be able to get it down to the gallons, and go after the money for the, maybe even at half and half, even if we had to take out a loan on something like that, if we got a low interest loan. We should be paid off of the other in twenty-seven, that might be a great project to start to look at.
And we have the capacity.
But play, play broke first, we don't have anything.
Well, and then, and then we can also, probably, if we, if we go for a loan, that area is severely distressed.
Yes, it is.
We could get a really good.
Yep, the whole district is free lunch.
Yeah. What are your thoughts?
Still, you know, stumbling over the eighty percent increase, I.
Yeah, on the Beards Cove.
Yeah. Forty-five's pretty, that's hard to swallow, but eighty percent is just.
But if we did the ten percent, just focus on this, we wouldn't have to do the eighty percent. Because the eighty percent covers what's needed, right?
It covers O and M.
Yeah.
But if we blow, as we're, as he's working on his capital program and looking at, do we meet the thresholds for debt service? If we're looking, you know, it's, it's looking out at a ten year, and, and that's why some of the recommendations. Russell Wood was SAO, you know, we've, we're looking at what, what do we need to do to make S, to correct some of the SAO.
Pat wasn't here for any of that, but we, we got in trouble for it.
Yes, to move the dial, and we have to, yeah, yeah.
And we have, we're getting there, we've done a lot in the last couple of years to.
I think we're very pleased, I think.
Yeah, well, just actually having a plan and find out what we had, makes a difference. Because remember before you came in, we didn't have any of that. We had, we had ideas of what it might be, but nobody ever wrote it down. I, I'm a guy, I need to see the numbers, I like to have a breakdown.
Yeah, me too.
We're boring the, our administrators, I was just pouring tears over here.
No, actually, it's, I'm just very behind the curve, and I, you know, I, I look at it from both a legislative standpoint and an operation standpoint, but also from a customer standpoint. And it's, it's not easy to find where the right balance is, because if you don't keep up with the O and M, O and M costs, and, you know, manage that side of it, well, the customers are gonna suffer in the long run, you know, and so.
That was some of the discussion with Russell Wood.
Yeah, and so how do you balance, you know, the, the problem where folks are, are. Yeah, and so how do you balance, you know, the, the problem where folks are, are not earning up to CPI and all those things, but still be able to manage a system so that you can ensure that they're not going to suffer greatly down the road? And that's, that's not an, not a easy thing to decide.
No.
And if you put all the years together, what we're doing, especially now that we have plans, we have numbers, is we have the, the elephant, we realize one was this big, and we've just started to take bites. But, you know, we can try to get there, but the truth of the matter is, because it's such a big deficit, we have to take bites.
Which one had the, the electrical?
Russell Wood.
Russell Wood, oh my gosh, that was scary.
I know. We need some pre-imposed photos, well, maybe.
No, we do, because.
I didn't wanna have any evidence of the pre.
Exactly.
And it just makes your eyes open, I was like, what in the hell?
Well, the pre also.
Everything not good.
Pre also helps you appreciate the present.
Yes.
And, uh, improvements, that was, that was bad.
It was really bad, yeah.
Exposed wiring.
Dangerous.
Oh my gosh, yeah, yeah.
Well, do you want us to come back, go out and shop ten percent?
I mean.
I heard some requests for some.
I think it'd be a mistake, i- if they decide to do that, then shop it, but if the decisions aren't made, don't be shopping anything. Uh, you shop ten percent, then we come in at four point four, or come in at forty. That could be a, a real big mistake. I'd rather us know what we're gonna do, give you a, a plan on how we expect it, and then decide even if you wanna go out. If it ends up that the other commissioners agree with me on like the four point four percent, don't. Just send out a thing.
Send out the normal.
That's a, that's a normal, uh, increase for the CPI, and you say, because we do CPI, blah, blah, blah. That gets out there to them, that is the argument, you can try and justify other things, but it's literally just that one line.
I think the only one that you're, the only two that you might create concern, well, probably will, will be the Russell Wood and the Beards Cove. But I, I really like the idea of putting these two, getting these two closer together, maybe eventually, where they're the same. I don't know if that'll work or not.
Well, we look at the number of like ERUs for North Bay, you're at about fifteen hundred ERUs, and in Belfer, you're right around six fifty. So, you know, when, when, I always go, all right, if we, we break a pipe in it, or a, a pump, or grinder pump, it's a hundred thousand, it's the per customer rate is, you know, two and a half times more for a Belfer customer to replace the same pump.
And then do you also have the, the distance between pipes too, right? So, so if in, in North Bay, your, your distance between customers is closer than it would be in Belfer, correct, or no?
Yeah, yes, in, in areas.
Certain areas.
Yeah, it's a lot further, but certain areas around top of each other, because it just got built with stuff, but. Per capita, if you had to add them all together, there's no doubt about it, they're a lot closer than Allen.
That's good, yeah, it's just that whole similar thing.
That's true, that's true.
Around the inlet.
I just hope you'll consider ten or less when it comes to Beards Cove, because they are definitely the most.
Distressed, right?
Distressed, yes. And will be able to afford it at least, and we did just do increases, no, we didn't do increases. Because I was at four point four percent, you got me up to ten with that one. Gil didn't even show up for those.
Yeah, I know.
We have a, a gentleman that has a lot of, uh, input that he's wanted to give over the years. He wants the water tower back, he wants us to pave it, wants us to give him the whole system back, and it's like.
They want it back.
No, he wanted it back, he was the chair. Well, our thing is, is you did on it, it was theirs, and then it collapsed so bad that PUD wouldn't take it.
Yeah.
So we ended up with it, and now it's profitable, of course, everyone wants it, it's profitable.
Now he just wants the tower painted.
Chair, do you need a motion?
That should be on the Capitol next year.
Well, I believe, this is workshop, so do we need?
I've got a motion to a chair.
I thought you were gonna make a motion about this.
I know, I have my opinion, I, I thought everybody needs to think about, you know, I've listened to what you guys have said, too, and I'll think about it, and then we'll come back in a week, or.
Kancy, do you wanna put this down for another week?
Well, if you wanna just go with what I suggested, no, just kidding. I would like to vote yes, I, I don't wanna, I've, I've never voted no on these, even when it's taken a beating, but I just know all the history, I don't wanna screw this up.
Another week would be good.
Let's do it.
Yep. Now, Chair, I move we in chair. I have pizzas I have to pass out, they're, they're, they're all cold, it's sitting in there.
All right, so, one week from today?
Isn't something we could just do during our regular briefing?
I don't mind that, that makes more sense.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, you could just come on to schedule. I appreciate it.